Why isn't it letting us?
Jackson County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. And we would just like to remind everybody, it's such a beautiful day, that get out there and exercise your right to vote. If you have not already, I know Lisa had said that they got a lot of absentees in, but I know she said that also there, she visited many polls this morning and there was people standing there waiting, so that's a good sign. Is our, is our duty and our right to vote, so get out there and do that. We will start today with Clark Showes, our Jackson County engineer. Clark? Morning.
Okay, first item on the agenda is that people want help. You do have a bid to him for the fuel bids. An interesting thing that occurred, Mole Gru Oil Company's bid came in the Thursday after, you know, Tuesday meeting. We consulted with CERON then because they were late. We were told the Mole Gru oil bid is late bid and not open. Apparently, they mailed them on the Friday before the end of the holiday, Memorial Day holiday.
What was it postmarked?
It was postmarked on the 22nd, but it says, you know, that it has to be in at nine o'clock Tuesday. So.
That's not very fair.
And that, well, how do you schedule a meeting based on when they decide? They had it for three weeks and they could have called or emailed and said, hey, we sent it in on a Friday. Can we mail a fax copy or, you know, an email copy? That was Sarah's advice.
I'm okay with that, if the attorney is okay with that, you know, if it's postmarked, normally you get counted, just like our absentee votes, if they're postmarked, you count it. Um, there is some responsibility there, of course, and holiday, they're well aware of that, so I guess they should have been a little more diligent in their process.
Basically, for the fuel, that leaves us with one, one bidder, River Valley. And you see the total there, twenty-one thousand nine thirty-five for both, you know, bio and non-bio. Basically, what we're talking about is the amount of fuel, not the actual price per gallon on that, because it's based on, you know, the weekly average hopeless price. So when gas goes up, you know, our cost go up, when the gas goes down, our block of diesel, the costs go down.
So I guess I just don't really understand that completely, but that's.
It's market value that they buy.
The way of doing business on your mind.
Well, yeah, I understand the market fluctuates.
It's really our advantage. I mean, if they had to bid, they'd have to say, well, it might go up fifty cents, so we're gonna make, pay fifty cents more. Just to be safe.
And if your bids go up when prices are high, you drop.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve the bids.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the River Valley Energy Low Bid of twenty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
And the next one is for the LP. Eighty-nine cents for the value of ninety point nine, nine, point nine nine nine. And again, Mole Gru's was, you know, the late bid. And.
Which we did not open.
So we don't know if they bid the LP and the bio and the, and the. We don't know that. Okay. Sean, you're, you're good with the LP and the bio bids as far as?
Yes.
Yeah. Quantity and whatnot?
Yep, I just come along basically.
So your recommendation, obviously, is the egg advantage.
Yeah, the eighty-nine cents.
So moved.
A motion and a second to approve the egg advantage bid for LP at point eight nine zero as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Uh, we have two utility permits. Lisa, we're looking for approval. We can only run motion.
You finally got your check?
Oh, yeah.
We ran table and table and this.
For two weeks or three weeks.
Because where my mind first went to, you know, the, what do you want to call it, the coronavirus checks? I'm going, wait, what? Lisa? Can we do it in one motion for the two?
Yes, you can do it in one motion, Clark.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first one is for Alliant Energy, South Fork Township, Section 182 Avenue, 91st Street. Replace four poles and string two new, uh, conductors for, uh, for the forest fans as per the plan. And the second one is Century Link, uh, McCoke County Township, Section seventeen on Thirty-Fifth Street. Born a new cable on the south side of Thirty-Fifth Street as per the attached plan, both being our.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the underground utility permit as presented from Alliant Energy in South Fork Township and from Century Link in McCoke County Township, seventeen. As presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Yes.
Uh, the next item is a driveway permit for Charles Cornelius, Jackson Township, Section seventeen. Can be a field entrance on three hundred twenty-eighth Avenue. Meets the site distance requirements recommended for approval.
Some move. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the entrance permit for a Charles Cornelius in Jackson Township, Section seventeen through and our Twenty-Eighth Avenue. And it is a field entrance, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Just one thing I want to clarify here, you know, the bids that we give for the, for the field. Uh, are we going bio, you know, during the summer and, you know, regular diesel during the winter? Or we're just going regular all the way?
I would like the recommendation from our mechanic, our. I mean, does it make a difference, does this thing work better one way or the other, or? I mean, I like the idea using the bio, I'm kind of.
Yes.
It is.
It's mine, as long as we, as long as we're sure we're gonna get it out before the weather turns.
I just think we help our local economy a little better if we use our bio, so that's my point of view, I guess.
Just wanted to get a question.
I, I think that's good.
Yeah, especially since we've saved the car. It would have been a difference.
Yeah.
And we've had that.
Sure, we have.
I've been using it my skid loader and I was doing a job somewhere and someone says, do you smell French fries? Oh, yes, that diesel or the fuel that it was burning.
Um, miscellaneous, just some updates, Iron Bridge Road, uh, the asphalt's down, the striping's down, except for the last five. But the, um, on that Sprigville, the asphalt is down, no striping yet. And we're doing those sidewalks and the handicap rooms. That's kind of the more interesting part of the project on that, because, you know, the smaller old towns and today's ADA requirements and that, you know, gas station in the corner and trying to deal with it. Yeah, trying to deal with that. It was kind of an interesting, you know, design for ADA, person that can stay, you know, to be reviewed. But they bought it and so, you know, if they come back and question it later, well, here's the review that you did.
I drove that road last night, we went to Bellevue for supper and that highway is so nice, I mean, it's just smooth and, I mean, it's just beautiful.
Well, when we nailed it, and you know, it was just the mill portion of the road, it was, it was something, such as, rather than the original.
I can believe.
That one south of Sprigville, I thought we could have left after the mill. It was that good. Some of the Iron Bridge, though, there was dips, you know, along the edge, and I talked to Mike about some of that, but boy. That south of Sebula or Sprigville Road, that was pretty nice and smooth after.
Those people have waited so long.
I hope them shoulders hold up.
Yeah, and eventually, you know, there's the north, any north from the center of town that's going to be done, so. We, you know, first, we wanted to do it as all one big project, but the money just wasn't there for it, unfortunately, so. Those are progressing.
To have those done.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to move right up to Ask Dave, let that.
Yeah, it wouldn't go to Ask Dave, huh?
Unless you have comments, well, yeah, there's, well, I think, no one's gonna argue with this one, there's more need for money.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
So I think, yeah, you can find a county engineer that says he's got more money than he does. Unless there are any other questions or comments, that's all.
Appreciate it, thanks, Clark.
Thank you.
Lisa, your thoughts?
Well, good morning, first off, secondly, I, I will yield this morning, I see that Scott and Will are on, so I will yield my time this morning to those gentlemen.
Thank you very much, and I see Scott. And I see Will.
Good morning.
So we are here to discuss, uh, and take possible action on the resolutions for Together We Build Project. Two different, um, resolutions actually that we approved last week, now they're putting in a resolution. Would either would like to explain what the process was there, or?
So the, the two different resolutions, the first is regarding the initial hundred thousand dollar commitment that the county made to the project early on. And I apologize, I don't remember how much of that commitment has already been paid, but I know a portion of it has been.
Fifty percent.
Fifty thousand has been paid.
Okay. And so basically, we're just documenting that contribution as well as the commitment for the revolving loan funds to cover our funding gap, uh, both related to the CAT grant that we have applied for and are in the process of follow-up and, and it sounds like there could be interviews coming up regarding the project. And so we're just trying to get all of our i's dotted and t's crossed before that first interview comes and and have all of our documents in place to, uh, confirm the commitments that we have.
And Luann, do you have the originals here then for, for, to be signed?
Mike, I have the original resolution.
Okay. Great, yeah, so this is basically just an extension of what we already did, sign and pass on the, the official minutes to them. And they, they wanted it in a resolution, so.
Right.
In a nutshell, Scott.
Yes.
We approve resolution number seven four two dash zero six dash zero two dash twenty twenty.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
I would also move that we approve resolution number seven four three dash oh six dash oh two dash twenty twenty.
I don't have those numbers. I don't blame, but I'll second. Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution number as presented for Together We Build Project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I wish you the best of luck in obtaining your grant.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Get it.
You too.
You too. Thank you. Lisa, I believe we're ready for you.
Um, I see that Mike has joined us, if you would like, I would yield my time again to Mike Griffin with the Jackson County Energy District.
Um, I don't see Mike, but I gotta find, there he is, up in the corner on the next page.
Oh. Well, he was there, there, no, yeah, there he is, okay.
All right, we thank you very much for doing that and welcome and good morning, Mike. You're muted, my man.
You have to unmute.
There you go.
Yeah, uh, if I could, I'd like to wait, wait a little bit, I've got Bruce Fisher, the chairman of our energy district is going to help me in the presentation, so he's not, he's not.
John, Mike.
Bruce is here.
Oh, Bruce is here, okay, well, then we can go.
Now he's unmuted.
Good morning, everybody.
Okay.
Morning, Bruce.
Anyhow, I'm Mike Griffin and Bruce Fisher will be joining me. And, uh, just, uh, we're members of the Jackson County Energy District and we're trying to get what's a group buy would be going on in Jackson County here. And we have a group that's called, uh, the Midwest Energy, uh, Midwest Renewable Energy Association that, uh, has done this in several other communities and counties across Iowa. And we're trying to make sure that we can, uh, it's a win-win-win deal for all the counties, because it means jobs, it means, uh, that our energy dependence will, will go down for the county. It's done and it should be good for the citizens, so we wanted to present it to you today. About that, a little bit about, you should have got a flyer there from M R E A. And, uh, I had Luann send that out to you. And the, the way that this thing works is that you get, you get the power of a group buy that, that will reduce, uh, costs for installation if you sign up. And then if you get so many to sign up, then you get a rebate back from the, the company. M R E A, they will, uh, go out and we get all their legal, uh, help, all of their expertise in doing that. And they'll send out a request for proposals. And, uh, pick one contractor that will do it, that's the, the part that gets in it for the contractor after we sign people up. Well, we had a booth at, uh, at the Farm and Home Show and we had, uh, a very good interest, over thirty people that were interested in putting solar in, in Jackson County, and we're looking for farms and, uh, and residential places.
And businesses.
And business.
And we're, we're looking at you guys to, to support that in, in that part, we'd also like you to be, uh, sponsors. Lynn County was a sponsor and, and with their Board of Supervisors and they, this same company helped them. It helps with the permitting process, then if you've got some government, uh, entities on board. And, uh, Bruce, you want to go into a little more on the M R E A group buy?
Sure, I, I can give you an overview, they're based out of Wisconsin, they've been around for over twenty years and they've done dozens and dozens of these group buys. They did one in Lynn County in nineteen, uh, excuse me, in two thousand seventeen. They duplicated that in two thousand nineteen, so they've done, had very two, two very successful buys in Lynn County. Uh, they had a, uh, very successful buy in Johnson County in two thousand eighteen, they're duplicating that right now in two thousand twenty. And in every case, the, the participants who are essentially installing solar on their properties have gained at least ten percent, and in some cases up to fourteen percent cost reductions through the power of a group buy. We want to be careful in coordinating our efforts with the county, because it has implications in terms of, uh, the workload for your inspections group that, uh, we would expect would, would, uh, partner with us, and also we want to make sure we're conforming with all the zoning requirements. Uh, we're committed to doing this, we're very excited, we've got a good number of stakeholders that I think this can be a real driver for economic development within our communities. And what's great about M R E A is that it doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't cost the Energy District anything, it doesn't cost the individual citizens anything. Uh, essentially, they are responsible for negotiating the contract, for defining the RFP based on our input. And in, and in addition, they provide us with all the program materials and marketing materials, uh, to support the effort, so it's, uh, it's a great value, they, they do get paid, they get paid by the installer. So, you know, essentially, if we have, we'll say twenty installations this year, which would be quite possible, I think. That collective purchasing power enables them to offer reduced prices. And in addition to that, they, they pay essentially a commission to M R E A for helping put together with us all of the marketing efforts. So there's no cost, no risk, essentially, um, and we've got a lot of interest from our, from our community members, so we're hoping to, uh, at a minimum, inform you and collaborate with you, but certainly we would love to see your active support as well. This is a little different approach in two thousand twenty that's been done in the past, because it's gonna be all virtual, we'll have these solar power hours where the installer, along with M R E A representatives and, uh, of course, the Energy District folks, will be doing Zooms with, uh, with our stakeholders, we plan on putting a Zoom and, uh, effort for every town in Jackson County. Uh, we plan on putting a couple Zooms together for farmers in Jackson County and a couple Zooms together for, uh, for our businesses in Jackson County. We're, we're pleased that, uh, the Economic Alliance, Jackson County Economic Alliance is gonna help us a little bit with, with supporting, uh, the marketing to the businesses community. And that's kind of what we're hoping for with, uh, with the county, is that you might just, to the extent that you're able, put in a good word for us and let them know that, uh, this is above board and, and, uh, it's something you're excited and supportive of, because it's gonna be good for our economy. There's another role that, that a county supervisor could play if he had the interest in doing so, and that would be to serve as a member of our advisory committee. Uh, that committee actually evaluates the, uh, the proposals and makes the decision on who to award the contract. And we would love the objectivity of the county to be brought to bear on that. Um, we're getting stakeholders across the county to participate on advisory committee and, and if any of you have the time or the interest, I think it would be a great educational program for you to just learn how this works. Looking out longer term, and if, I don't know, we can put it together this year, but in a subsequent year, maybe we can bring in, uh, the jail or the hospital into this group buy that we're looking to, to coordinate with, as we also hope we will with, uh, with the Hurstville Center when they look to, to perhaps someday get their solar going. So that's what I'm talking with you guys, and I'll pause on that note.
It sounds like they were closer than, closer to doing something or making a decision at the, uh, interpretive center, I guess I have a couple questions. Bruce is, is one, is what we call, when Griff was talking about a signup, do we need to commit to X amount of projects per year, like per, say, our county?
We, we do not. They offer a base price regardless of how many that we have, which is at ten percent below their normal retail value. And then after you hit a threshold, you start getting additional rebates, like point five percent as it goes up. I think the first threshold is fifty kilowatts, uh, and then it continues to go up from that, from that point, so there's no obligation, no commitment as to the number of installations.
Or size, okay. My second question is, when you said you would like to support or us to be a sponsor, along with that, is there funding or are you basically looking for an endorsement?
We, we certainly want an endorsement, uh, and, and, and we're not asking for funding, no.
Yeah.
I know the RC and D had a couple solar fairs, one in Tipton and one in Monticello. Maybe a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, but they were extremely successful and they were always gonna do one in Jackson County, but obviously with the pandemic, that's not in the planning right now. But I know they had a lot of interests, a lot of interest, a lot from the rural community, so I think it's something we should at least.
You know, with that being said, we can seriously consider design of that jail if that goes down the pipe, so there's room for the solar there.
And on a point with that, Mike and, and Jack, I would say that, that, uh, you can install solar in this jail for no cost. You could have investors fund this effort, um, and it would have an incredible return on investment for, for you all, because you wouldn't have any energy bills essentially, or very few energy bills associated with that jail. I think it'd be an outstanding selling point that could perhaps invite a little bit more support for the effort.
I'm all for that.
Well, we should, we, let's talk with you about how to make that happen, because we're in touch with investor groups, we've had them, uh, you know, make, make opportunities available to us, and they have a great interest in working with our county.
So you're, you're basically asking us for an endorsement, that's what I'm taking here, we certainly would like to have you present, um, a presentation, you, like you said, for a proposal for the jail, to, to see what kind of, you know, i- i- if it's a sound as good as you made it sound in two sentences, that, that's good, I guess we can stop there.
And I believe, I don't believe Mike would be on board if it wasn't that good.
You get a lot of credit there, Mike, I'm just saying.
Well, I trust him.
I apologize, I called you Griff, that's what I've been calling you for twenty-five years, so.
That's okay.
Fine with me, you know?
Mike, I feel great being able to ride your coattails of credibility.
Well, we certainly, uh, I think we'd certainly like to be, um, I, is there action to be taken on this today, or is there?
Discussion, possible action.
Okay.
The actions would be potentially, if one of you were, were to want to agree to serve on our, uh, advisory committee and have a hand in making, you know, the RFP and, and deciding who we're gonna award the contract to. It's really not a huge investment of time, my guess would be probably somewhere between two and four hours over the next month. Uh, we would expect this activity to launch in terms of actually beginning to market it actively and, and start to do some installations in about four to six weeks, probably closer to six weeks. So that would be one ask, if one of you wanted to be involved in the advisory committee, and I think it's a great learning opportunity for you all, as well as helps bring objectivity to the process.
So is it something you're interested in?
I need to find out more information.
Because of the fact that if this, if the interpretive center is doing that, then maybe, in fact, you know, maybe you could bring some insight.
Need more information on it to make a decision.
That, that's fair. And then the other ask we would make, and I don't know how this would work if it's even feasible, but if there are avenues by which you are able to reach out to the community from a promotional or, or marketing perspective to get the word out, we would very much appreciate that, I think, uh, again, just, just hearing the Board of Supervisors represent the value of this effort to our community would, would be a selling point for the program, I believe.
And I think to go along with that is the same thing that Larry just said, we need more information to say so we can, uh, actually back our answers, yeah, we can say, yeah, we, we, we promoting, but somebody's gonna ask you, what are you promoting here? And we gotta, we gotta know what we're talking about, sound like a little bit, you know?
Absolutely, when, when can we do that, we can, we could probably make a great kind of PowerPoint-led presentation. Fifteen to thirty minutes, that we could make it fifteen minutes, probably.
But why don't we have Luann set up a work session with the board and, um, just plan on that?
Yeah, we'll see what the next, what our next maybe meeting even looks like, does any certain time work better for either one of you two? Or whoever's doing the presentation?
I think Mike and I would partner on it, and I think we're pretty much available at their leisure, aren't we, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would say that we have Luann and, and you set up a meeting and
Okay.
You know, she knows what our calendar is, without a doubt, so we can discuss it and get back to you.
That'd be great, guys, thank you.
Yeah. So basically, at this, at this time, uh, we'll just, we'll just table it and we'll set up a work session? Is that okay?
That'd be great.
Okay, I, I don't know if it'll be the end of this week or not, because we have, uh, preserved summit in Dubuque here that a lot of different classes and courses that are going on if we're gonna participate, so. See if it gets up.
Truly grateful for your interest and, and, uh, anticipated support. We'll be looking forward to talking with you again soon.
Bet, Bruce, thanks.
Thank, thanks for the time.
Have a good day, gentlemen.
You too.
Mike, because of the people that are on again this morning, then I can see, I think I will yield my time for Luann.
Uh, you're, you're talking, uh, Luann right now, or Becky, or?
If Becky is available, if Becky is available, that's fine, if not, I would yield my time to Luann.
Becky's looking at us.
Oh, okay.
She's right here.
Oh, okay, well.
Please, so we get a, so she can see you. We can see you better. Becky?
You're gonna, yep, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So I am here today to discuss the, um, employment attract between our coordinator of disability services, Lynn Oakes. She has had on, she has been on a five-year contract rotation, her contract does expire this June period. I prepared with minimal changes, I didn't email that out yesterday, if you all seen that, um, just a few updates to her current contract. Her contract five years ago, we were still having case management services, and that has phased itself out, so the changes that were made just mirror those reflections. Added a little bit more language about the Eastern Island Health Disability region that she's been working heavily with. Updated the salary. Everything else stayed the same.
Anything for children's mental health? I know some directors are taking a partial role in that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the management team will be working with the children's program as well.
Okay.
As will the whole, I mean, there are additional members going to be appointed to our Board of Directors and to the management.
to our board of directors and to the management team, but.
Yes, I think her contract specifically mentions uh mental health and disability regions, so whatever that region encompasses.
Does include the children's services after July 1st.
The problem is funding, yeah, that's what I read.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I guess
Since nineteen ninety-six.
I guess my question is, Becky, has there been basically a change in duties, less duties because we don't have the case management or is there still, or maybe more because she's the only person in the office?
She is, so she was, she, they're, that office provided mental health services as well, which was one of his key pieces of her position for. She overseen the case managers as well, where she did have those five or six case managers that were doing the day-to-day um client services. So I think with the addition of the region, I would say that she's she's picked up. Her job has gone a different direction somewhat. But I would say as far as more or less services, it probably
It's certainly not less.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, yeah.
I did read it over and again, unless there's something side by side, you know, the the minimal differences are to highlight them. I know you're taking a few words out here and there, but yeah.
Yeah, that was it. Did you get this one?
I don't know if I got the highlighted one of it. Maybe I did.
Yeah, so the one was just that her original contract and this one with everything red looking on changes. So, yeah.
I said make a motion to.
I would second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the county CRP employment contract as presented. Any further discussion?
CPC.
C, C, CPC, I left my bifocals up a little bit. CPC employment contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
And I do have the original one here today. I'll have the three board members sign it. So I'll have the original one to get a copy back if you guys are interested in having a copy of that. She was available today if anybody could comment. Um I just did never sign it. And along with that, we did go ahead and update her job description. Um and this was a complete revamp. We got a new um format that we use here. And the job has changed enough that it just warranted redoing the whole job description. Um if you had a chance to read it, I don't know. The original one I did not include. It does refer to quite a bit of case management services. It was easier to start fresh over and mirror this more with the coordinator of disability services does to try to strike out the old job description self. She did use, Lynn actually updated this for me. Um I did look at it. She has a counterpart, state of town, where it was, that has already recently revised their job description. Um they do almost the exact same, so it makes sense to kind of update it based off of that, so. I would just ask if everything is good with that, just to make sure there's nothing to be done this time today, just to make a motion to approve the updated job description.
Someone. Uh I have motion and a second to approve the updated job description was CPC position employment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. Very efficient.
All right.
Thank you. Have a good day. Should be a little long yet.
Beautiful weather.
It is beautiful weather.
What else would you give?
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Lisa, are you still okay if we proceed with Luann so we could get the
I am.
All right.
I am.
Thank you. Good morning, Luann.
Good morning. We'll start with the calendar this week. I have nothing on the calendar for tomorrow. That hasn't happened for a while. Thursday, June 4th, from 1:00 PM to 4:30 is the Preserve Iowa Virtual Summit by Zoom for all three of you. I will show you, you can find the schedule of events that has the Zoom links embedded in it, so.
Okay, I seen that this morning when you sent it out.
Yeah, and each session has its own link, so you just have to put within that schedule.
Actually gives you a a list of times and events that are
It's in the, it's in our folder here too.
Right.
Okay, everything's going on, what's about?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh four o'clock Thursday afternoon is a local emergency planning committee meeting conference call um for all of you. Friday, June 5th, the Preserve Iowa Virtual Summit continues from 8:30 to 6:15. And again, it's not all day, it's whatever sessions you choose to attend.
So will they send us like a lunch break? We can go off for lunch somewhere when we come back.
It's not on the schedule.
What do you know about that, Dave?
That's not Dave, Dave, that's Jane.
Yeah, that is Jane, yeah.
And I'll tell you, Jane has much prettier hair.
That's a nice it's a nice office. Okay.
All right. Again, the Preserve Iowa Summit continues actually into Saturday as well, 6th. On Monday, June 8th, at 7:00 AM is an early childhood Iowa Executive Board meeting for Jack, and I'm not sure if it's going to be in June or if it's going to be by Zoom. We'll figure that out as we go.
Yeah.
And at 4:30 Monday afternoon is Mississippi Valley Workforce Area Meeting. That will be the Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June 9th at 9:00 AM. And that afternoon at four o'clock is a Public River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting. Might be a Zoom for Larry. And I have in my calendar at 4:30 an Iowa Workforce meeting, but that is tentative at this point, so I don't have the confirmation for that.
Okay, we're in ahead with the uh emails and stuff that you got about Operation New View and HACAF and um I think there's another one. Have they decided if we're going to meet, when we're going to meet? I know Miranda and Michelle McNerney and Dennis Duke and myself were supposed to have some kind of a meeting later this week. Have you heard anything more back from them?
There was one that come early this morning or late yesterday that uh I think was looking for everyone to respond. It said reply to all, what time you can make it. I think they were looking for a time between
Okay, because I know the one you answered back and said that Larry and I would both be available Friday morning, right? But not on Thursday. So I just wondered if we'd heard anything, because that way you can set your calendar.
One just come in not too long ago. I can't remember exactly when, but
There's a couple of them that want to meet this week.
Yeah.
And they're always for Jack. And these short notice meetings. So I will check again when I go back to my desk.
I'm the one that's not busy.
That's right.
Um first order of business this morning is discussion possible action on the emergency small business loan program that we've been working on for a few weeks.
Well, I think we have our review board
Did you, did you make any calls, Larry? Did you?
I talked to Gerald Friday morning in our meeting we had.
But did you call somebody to be on the committee or no?
I know.
Okay.
I see, and Patty Huffman sent a message back.
Okay, my, after some calls, calls we made, um the review committee would be consisting of Kathy Till from Andrew, John Huff from Bellevue, Patty Huffman from Preston, Roger Stewart from McCoqueta, and Matt Speck from ECIA.
If that's, every, everybody is content with that. We made some calls and got some yays and nays. Some are not comfortable, some are overly busy with the um some of them were on the revolving loan committee already, but with the new programs coming out for bankers and such, uh I feel like they're really going to get bombarded. So does anybody have any comments on that list? I don't know if Dean is on, but I see Jane Hires on and uh Nick is on.
Do we need any um substitutes or?
Yeah, that was going to be my my question. Uh do you want to appoint alternates or?
Alternates, yeah.
Those individuals that I talked to, I told them that would be a short duration, the applications would go to Matt, Matt would forward them to the applicants to review, and then they would make a recommendation to this board. And all of them that I talked to said that they were fine with that. Um and they just wanted to know when they might start receiving them, and I says, well, you'll receive them as soon as Matt gets them and can forward them to you.
Okay.
So I guess I don't see any need for um having anybody as a stand and or standby.
With that being said, I would make a motion that we approve, appoint these to that board.
I'm a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve John Huff, Kathy Till, Roger Stewart, Patty Huffman, and Max Speck to the revolving loan special
Review Committee.
Review Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. And we have the dates set out there. Is there a news release going out here?
Our off, our office will work on a news release with Matt, um uh so we can get that out to the papers and the and the radio and other relevant media. Um now that we have the committee assignments.
And this, let's just confirm our dates. So I believe the applications were to be in by the sixth
I thought it was um June 15th.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was the 16th or the two weeks. Could somebody write that down? I got applications wrote down are due by June 15th and how we were going to distribute that. And then final, yeah. Decisions will be made by the 30th. Is that correct?
Yeah, you know, we had talked about two or three weeks of of an application period, so that follows.
Really, that's what I have written.
That's what I have down on my notes here. I don't know, something changed.
That's the date we'll promote.
The only question I I had was, were we going to follow the the form that we got last week from from Matt? Because it kind of gave opportunity for them to answer some questions and some financial data that we need, they needed to see.
Yeah, I think I was, it was, it was pretty simple.
Yeah, it was simple application, so. I guess I thought that was what we would use.
I'm okay with it. Everybody else is okay with it.
Are you okay with that application, Nick?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Is there anything else we need? Uh you'll work on the press release to get that out? And we'll wait for applications to come in, I guess, and review. Is that your permanent officer, Nick, or you're going to?
I I'm in, I'm in my regular office.
We noticed
Oh, yeah, we didn't see the whole.
Henry wasn't with you.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Or the cat.
Or the cat. And tell Jane hi, Dave.
I will do that, thank you. And I'll let her know that her hair is prettier than mine, although that's not a lot of competition.
Well, you know, and yours is prettier than mine.
This is quite a conversation here now. All right, anything else with that, gentlemen? All right, we'll wait to see that, and you will carbon us on that draft or press release. Thank you, Nick.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, my last bit of business is to talk about the Welcome Center. I've put on your desk the email from Tom Devine. They're not quite sure that they should open, like when they should open, how they should handle it in light of the pandemic. He's looking for some guidance.
Are you, is Tom on?
No.
Yes, he is. Oh, yeah, I see him. Hi, Tom.
Hi, good morning. Yes, yes.
His name is there.
I see him. I see his name, but I don't see him.
I see the white circle and then
Can you hear me?
Are you afraid? Yeah, we can hear you. We can't see you.
Oh, I, yes, I I don't have as near as good a haircut as you guys do, so.
Well, we'd like some insight from you. I guess my thoughts are everything else is kind of pretty much open as far as city halls, the courthouse is open again today. I know the interpretive center is open today. I just had a call from Nathan, so I don't know what that was, but what's what's your thoughts, Tom?
Well, our, the board has asked me to give you a, you know, give you a heads up that since it is your property, we want your, wanted your input. We normally open on May 1st. Uh of course, with everything that's going on, we've held off on that and moved it back to June 1st. Recently, uh the board has had discussion of holding it off until July 1st. We're finding that uh and and this is we have a weekly meeting with Iowa Tourism, uh a webinar, and we're finding that tra, although travel is increasing, the the travel on the main roads is what's increasing and the travel on the secondary roads, which is ours, is not. Most of everything that's that we're finding from the State Tourism Office, everything is being found on the internet. And uh we have, uh as you know, we put in a new internet la, or new website last year and continue to update that and I'm getting a lot of uh continue to get a lot of hits on that and a lot of information is disseminated that way. We're just, uh we're, we're more concerned to the fact that uh even on on great days, we don't have a whole lot of activity there. Uh most of our staff is elderly. Uh most of the people that will you, will be stopping are elderly. But uh we're, we're just, uh again, we're just wanting your input on how fa, how safe you feel it is to open and and uh we will, uh you know, make our plans according.
Well, you know, one of the things I, you know, when I read that email this morning and looking and listening to the news and everything that's going on in the state, so many of the events are being canceled. I mean, Heritage Day, we don't, I don't know yet about the Jackson County Fair. There hasn't been a decision, but most of the Fourth of July celebrations are are gone. And of course, RagBri and all of that stuff is gone, so you know, I guess, Tom, I would say July 1st would be early enough unless um unless you and your board decide that maybe you need to open sooner than that. But, you know, with with the lack of trans, you know, traveling, I I just, I just don't know that there would be enough enough people stopping at the center to warrant you being there.
Very, very true, Jack, and and we continue, you know, I, year round, uh even even when I'm down south in the wintertime, I I basically manage my office from my computer, which I'm at right now in in my mobile office. And uh so most of, most of our stuff has gone internet anyway, so uh I'll pass that on to the board and and we have a meeting here a week from Thursday. And uh we'll put that on the agenda and talk about that, and I'll let them know your thoughts on that, and I do appreciate your input.
I guess, Mike, um that's going to bring up a lot good discussion or discussion that needs to be had on the future of that building also. You know, when you say you were on in your mobile office, how did you mount that monitor on your horse, I want to ask?
A lot of duct tape, a lot of duct tape.
No, but I know, we talked about that building before, you know, and and it's like uh are we getting our money's worth out of that building? Or what's the future of that building or, I mean, you talked about it last year, I know, Tom, and uh
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't really
On a limited basis even, you know, I, you know, you talk about the traffic, I tell you, if you go somewhere, if you happen to go somewhere, it's, it's, it's crazy what's the amount of traffic that's out there, though. I mean, it's unbelievable. I I don't know. It's it's unbelievable.
Yeah, and we've, we've monitored that for the last five years, and it has been, it has been going down. Unfortunately, this year it won't be a good gauge. Um we were, we were kind of hoping actually this year to use this as as kind of a pivotal year as just as to uh making that decision, but I think with everything that's going on, I don't think we'll have the accurate action about, uh you know, how we can proceed.
Well, this year will
No, no, not at all.
Any kind of decisions?
No, not at all, correct. So I know that's not a good answer to your question, Mike, but that, it's, it's, it's really a hard, hard hard animal to take a look at with, with everything that's going on.
But I guess I, I do agree with, with Mike. I think that's something that our board and your board need to sit down and discuss.
So I see, like, from Coqueta Caves has done a virtual tour of the caves and the area and stuff. But maybe that's something we need to work for, I mean, for the county, so people can go on and actually do the flyover Prairie Creek and all the other parks and different areas we have, maybe that's something we can work on this year, get more stuff bring more people in, even though we don't have this, that place open, so.
Well, I know it's quite, kind of change for that historical society too. With the Clinton Engines Building closed, and here we're trying to plan an event for the railcar and with beloved Brothers Concert and all of that, and, you know, it's all up in air. And the museum at the fairgrounds, it's all too closed, so, you know, we're losing a lot of traffic. And I know the people that do genealogy are out pulling their hair out because they can't get in there to do their, their work. So there's, there's a lot of, a lot of people being affected, a lot of companies and a lot of, just sad deal.
That is.
Yeah, it is, and, and we're finding, I, I think one of the advan, you know, if, if there is a silver lining is that we, we don't count on the big, large events, you know, the 10,000, the Field of Dreams things, the things like that. We, our, our tourism is based on people getting out and going through the caves and, and going to Bellevue State Park. And our county parks, you know, so, and that's what people are doing right now. So our, our tourism is still going, we're, we're proud in the fact that we just, we just distributed almost $5,000 again in many grants that comes in from the dues that the members pay. And we've got some really great programs, one of those is a virtual tour of Iowa Grapevine. So, yeah, they're, they're being creative about what they're doing, and we're trying to do everything we can to help them get that done.
Okay, I guess we'll leave it up to your board, and we'll try to have a joint meeting sometime to discuss what's, what's coming up next.
Sounds great, thank you very much for your input.
That's the only other thing, Tom, if, if your point think is there's a reason to have, you know, again, a limited, limited time basis for, you know, a couple of days on the weekend or something, I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're.
Hell and air too, you know.
Yeah, we've been in a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday for, for quite a while, so we really are kind of on a limited basis. And, and I tried in, in October last year of actually being open seven days a week, just to see what we were missing, the Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And we weren't missing a whole lot.
Yeah, there are a lot of people out just doing drives and stuff too, so, I mean, I think you could get people in there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much, have a great one, stay safe.
Well, okay, that's all. Three, I didn't, okay, that's just action on board business, all right.
Now we'll go back to Lisa.
Lisa, are you still there?
I'm here, I'm here.
All right.
Time to wake up.
Yeah. This morning I need a motion, yeah, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 26, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the May 26, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
I know this will be what, this next motion will be a surprise. Motion needed to approve a handwritten warrant for the U.S. Post Office for the Auditor's Office Business Reply Postage Account for $1,000.
Thought we did that last week.
That was 8,000.
We ate that one last week. Come on.
I know.
Secretary of State.
Yeah, well, hopefully this is our last time we'll be doing this, so I just.
Maybe we can reverse it, this next one, they're going to give back to government entities on the next stimulus.
I would move we approve.
Handwritten warrant. Second.
Motion of second to approve a handwritten warrant for the U.S. Post Office for the Auditor's Office Business Reply Postage Account for $1,000. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place on file and authorize the Chair's signature on the County Recorder's Report of Fees Collected for the month of May 2020 in the amount of $47,348.15.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion of second to approve the County Recorder's Report of Fees Collected for a month of May 2020 in the amount of $47,348.15. Any further discussion? Actually, that was a pretty good amount for considering everything that went on, that's, that's more than normal, so.
Yep, yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a Class B beer permit with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Zowingle Recreation Association at 28461, 194th Avenue, effective June 1st, 2020 to December 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion of second to approve Class B beer permit with outdoor sales and service to Zowingle Recreation Center at 28461, 1494 Street Avenue, de facto, effective June 1st of 2020 to December 1 of 2020, as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
And just to make sure that everybody understands that today the doors of the courthouse are open. They opened at 8:30 this morning, they will close at four o'clock this afternoon. That will allow the county employees that half an hour to do the cleaning and disinfecting of individual offices. So as you can hear, there's, go ahead, Mike.
I'm sorry, you said closed today at four? I thought they were open today.
Well, we are going to have our doors open today till nine o'clock because of the polls being open. But the standard time now that we are opening the courthouse will be 8:30 AM to four o'clock PM today because it's Election Day. We will close the doors at nine o'clock tonight to allow absentee ballots to still be received here in the Auditor's Office. So just a gentle reminder today, and as Mike, you said in the opening, just get out and vote today, it's a beautiful day.
Yep. Wish you and your staff the best today and.
Thank you.
Great saying.
Yep, that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you, have a great day. Okay, any other, we don't have any work sessions at this time, correct?
I guess, though, we don't, but someplace it says further discussion on table than pending items. I really think that, you know, about three weeks ago or so, I was at the Together Rebuild meeting, and John Hanson was there. And he pulled me outside and said that he was working on some figures for us. And he said he would be getting them to us soon. Well, to me, three weeks is not really soon. And, you know.
Well, at some point here in the near future, we're going to have to make a decision if we're still looking to go in September for a vote.
Well, that's, that's my, my point exactly. I, I guess, you know, he was, said he was still working with the Sheriff's Department on figures for the cost of housing, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, if we don't get some figures and make some decisions, pretty soon, we're never going to be able to have an election in September. And I know there's, there was some discussion and stuff talked about in the paper about waiting till the new sheriff is elected. And I, I said, you know, after the primary today, we have a floor plan for the jail. If we want to bring the two successful candidates in after the election today, we can do that. They can look at the floor plan, they can give us some ideas as to what they do like, what they don't like, what they would like to see. And then we can interpret that to what we think, and have John Hanson and the architect look at, look at their, their comments. But I think the longer we put it off, the, all, all that's going to happen is the price is going to go up. So I guess I'm, I'm really getting a little, a little concerned that we're not getting more information.
Well, I would suggest after the primaries over here, the two successful candidates, the viable candidates would have a discussion with us. And we move in that direction and decide, make a decision if we're having a September election or not. Any other comments on that?
No, I, I think we have to, but I think in the meantime, we have to communicate with John, whether it's you as chairman or somebody else call and say, hey, we need to get some pretty substantial, accurate figures so that we can move forward, because that's what the public is going to want to know.
We had most of our figures other than maybe than operating expenses, is that what we're looking for?
When, when he talked to me, he was talking about the building, and he said the figures that he was putting together was going to include the training area, and that's something we had discussed, so I don't know.
We did have the breakdown of the expansion of the two units, upper level, and then future expansion there and the cost of the training area. I think we were more looking for just the cost of operating, daily operating expenses, is that what we were?
Well, that was part of it, yes. But I think also they were going to put some alternatives if we did this or if we did that, what the cost difference would be. And those are the things that we need to look at, but the, I, I don't know. I just don't think we have all the information that we need to make a decision, yeah.
Okay, I can sure get ahold of John again, I'd like to, again, wait till after this anyway, and see where we're at. Have a discussion with the two candidates and say, here, here's, here's when John's coming and he's discussing this and.
Why don't you call and see if you can get it set up for maybe this, later this week or next week? We can do that ahead of time.
Well, you've Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, you're busy, so.
This is true.
I would say if we could get John, even, even a Zoom meeting is okay with me. But just see if we can't get him the first part of next week or after our board meeting next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Because I just think if we're going to try and have something in September, I mean.
Well, basically, an update here is what we need.
We don't have a heck of a lot of time between now and September to go out and promote and answer questions and get information.
I'll do that. Okay. Any other unfinished business?
Well, is there a little?
Only special on words and commissions is all I see.
Yeah, well, I see that workforce is still in.
We're still working.
Yeah, we're still working on it, so, so it's work in progress, so.
I talked with O'Hande this week, trying to get some stuff set up for the new board and for the, the CEOs. And with that being said, I'd move we adjourn.
Um, I, I have, I want to go back just one spot, I think I, I forgot to ask if there was any visitors or any other citizens from the public that would like to comment in that section, I, I missed that. Is anyone else on? All right, hearing none.
Kelly Gearlock's on twice.
Kelly is on twice, she showed up twice.
Once with the little cap of snowman.
Yeah, my internet is unstable right now.
I see. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second to adjourn, all those in favor. All right, meeting, motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a great day, get out and exercise your right to vote, thank you.